Back on.
Okay, welcome to the um October third twenty twenty three Village Buchanan Board Meeting, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the law.
Pledge of United States of America. And it's good even for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, just as it is for.
That was.
Excuse me.
First get, you know, nowhere.
Alert to me, I think. Okay, so first is the approval of the minutes for August first uh twenty twenty three board meeting and the September twenty 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 three special meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or questions on the minutes?
I have none.
No, nothing.
Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, comments from the floor, agenda items only. No comments? Okay, so we have a, we have a pretty large meeting here tonight, so just bear with us. Um, so the first is I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding chapter one eighty-one entitled taxation, senior citizens tax exemptions. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, so what this is, and Cindy correct me if I'm wrong, um, this is for uh senior citizens and um, so if the income of the owner or the combined income of the owners of the property exceeds the sum of fifty-eight thousand four hundred for the twelve consecutive months preceding the date of the making of the application, so you'd have to file an application for this exemption. Where the income is less than fifty-eight thousand four hundred, the following schedule shall apply and shall set the percent of tax exemption allowed. So if you make up to fifty thousand dollars, and this includes a combined income, husband and wife, or whoever's on the deed, um, the percent of the tax exemption is fifty percent. Fifty thousand and one dollars to fifty-five six ninety-nine is twenty percent of a, an exemption that's allowed. Fifty-five seven hundred to fifty-seven four ninety-nine is a ten percent exemption. And over fifty-eight four, you're not eligible for this exemption. So this is up from um, this, this is something we've had before, but I think the exemption was up to twenty
Twenty seven.
Thirty-seven thousand, okay, so this date has bumped up.
Yes, I do, the application.
My, my, I'm sorry. Sure, yes, okay.
So, okay, the application is due by December thirty-first. And um, could, yeah, call the office or um, for the seniors that go to the senior center. If we could have someone mention that um, at the senior meeting, the next senior meeting. And we could also put something out on Facebook or, or some, something to get the message out.
We have to pay, have to.
Okay, all right, but thank you, Cindy. Because that's important, there's a lot of people on fixed incomes here too. Yep, Cindy's got it. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, any?
This is simply just to raise the limits in accordance with New York State.
Mm-hmm.
Buchanan isn't doing anything different, we're just following the guidelines, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're acting into the, to the updated numbers.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
None.
Anyone have any comments in the audience? This is pretty straightforward, um, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution to read. And I think I left off last time, uh. You guys read, would you, would you mind reading that, Anthony? I think I had left you out of last time's reading.
Which is the bonds?
No, this is um, for chapter one eighty-one. It's attached, so that is.
Oh. There's one here, yeah.
Okay.
It's on third page, Cindy. There you go. Village Buchanan Resolution authorizing adoption of local law number seven dash two zero two-three, amending chapter one eighty-one of the code of the Village of Buchanan. Whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said village board at the municipal building, two thirty-six Tate Avenue Buchanan. To hear all interested parties on a proposed local law amending chapter one eighty-one entitled Taxation to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. And whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper. And whereas said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the village board on October third, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. at the municipal, municipal building, two thirty-six Tate Avenue, Buchanan, New York. And all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf or in opposition to said proposed local law for any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan, after due deliber- deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the Village of Buchanan to adopt said local law. Now be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopts said local law number seven dash two zero two-three, amending chapter one eighty-one of the code of the Village of Buchanan. By amending article one, a copy of which is attached here, is attached hereto and made a part of this resolution. And be it therefore resolved that the village clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan and to give due notice to the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of the State of New York.
So on a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the next is a bond res- resolution authorizing the issue of up to ninety thousand um in serial bonds of the Village Buchanan County Westchester State of New York pursuant to local finance law. And this is um, the village finds it necessary to purchase a um, a vehicle for the fire department. And Marcus, would you like to, any?
Okay, so if anybody didn't miss the last workshop, we had a meeting with Capital Projects during that meeting, uh, the chief m- mentioned that one of the fire chief vehicles wa- was rear-ended and totaled in an accident. And we're in need to replace that vehicle for the fire chief, so um, the board au- the board authorized to um, actually look into purchasing that truck. And looking at the interest rates now, I recommend it to the board that we take a ban, which is a bond anticipation note, which is renewable every year, and the interest rate is actually less than the money we invest in, so give you, give you some information. Right now, the fire, we, the fire department has an amount set aside to replace vehicles, which is about two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. But us leaving the eighty-five or ninety thousand dollars in, in the fund, we actually earn more interest than what we pay for the debt, so therefore the, the amount in that balance will actually grow over time. Um, so I'm recommending to the board that we borrow the money, since the rate is less than what we're earning. Keep the balance of the full amount in the account and keep on earning interest. And then when the, when it's due next year, which is about sixteen or seventeen thousand, we'll pull that principal out of that amount. The interest that's earned, actually, we earn more money, so we're actually in the black a little bit, so it's like a, it's not even an interest-free loan, and actually, we actually earning money on the money that's being earned in interest, so that's my recommendation to the board. It's not a long-term commitment, it's one year, it's for some reason interest rate changed, we can pay off the full amount out of, out of balance. But I'm just trying to get the, get the balance keeps on growing to offset any additional purchases in the future, so that's what I'm recommending to the board. Hopefully, I, I explained that and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You want to, you want to give the public any information on current bonds that we have out there that are pre-existing that?
Sure, okay, sure. Sure, no problem, we actually, right now outstanding debt, we have two bonds, one is a really old bond that actually comes due in a couple of years, and that's about seventy thousand dollars, I think it's three years left? Two years left, so that bond will be totally paid off, so that extra money could be actually used by the village to pay to more, more borrowing in the future, there'll be no tax impact, so that's a benefit of that bond coming to a close. The other bond mainly, we took a couple of years ago, that was mainly for the fourth street pump station, some other equipment that was purchased. That has a number of years left on that as well, but the money's already borrowed for it, so there's no real impact. And that money that's borrowed, and then we had a, oh, um, a ban that we took out for the police department, and that's going to be paid off in March. So really, we're only going to have two bonds and this ban left over, and just for the benefit, since the mayor asked me to do this, we actually looked at the constitutional debt, debt limit, which we're actually submitted, required to submit to the state of New York regardless how much total debt we have. According to the rec, the information that we did with the state, we are a point twenty-five percent, twenty-five, so a quarter of a percent is our debt limit, which is one of the lowest in the probably state of New York, so, so debt-wise, we have very little debt. And the only reason I recommend even taking out debt here is because we're actually going to be in a positive by borrowing this money, so I really take debt very seriously as well, we don't want to borrow money, we don't need to. But at the same time, we might have to come position where to borrow money, I wanted to max minimize the impact to the taxpayers, so. So that's the update, so our debt is very, very low, and I think the board takes that very seriously, um, and I would appre- and I really appreciate they considering this, and at the end of the day, that's actually benefits the village overall, so appreciate you asking me about that, so I think we're in pretty good shape financially.
Yeah, that's, that's important, because I know a lot of the uh, communities in Westchester County are very heavily in debt. So, you know, especially going forward here in the village, we don't know what we're going to lose yet, so we don't want to get in, you know, into a lot of debt.
So it's, oh, Tom, do you want to make it easier, the board can read the entire resolution, which is a couple of pages?
I just want to make a comment.
Or, or, oh, yeah, but you can just read the top portion, the bolded portion, if the board, when they most of all makes it easy for the board, thank you.
So to comment about the vehicle, this, this, this is a vehicle too that was due to be replaced anyway. And the chief uh, informed us of that when we had a workshop, so it, it was a vehicle that was due to get replaced as well, and there is an insurance claim waiting to settle, which will offset some of the costs, so.
Good point.
Wanted the public to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, and Dan is our liaison to the fire department. So thank you for being on top of that.
Absolutely.
Um, so any other comments? Questions? So um, the bond resolution dated October third, twenty twenty-three, authorizing the issuance of up to ninety thousand aggregate principal amount serial bonds, the Village Buchanan County of Westchester State of New York, pursuant to local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition of a motor vehicle for the village fire department. So can I have a motion? I'd make, I make a motion, I'm sorry, can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mayor, uh, I'll be abstaining from this, seeing as I am the chairperson over the firehouse.
All right, thank you, Bob, thank you for saying that. Okay, next. Whoops, let's see, that's nothing. So the next is a resolution um, declaring village-owned property um, at three two two nine Blakely Avenue surplus and unneeded for any municipal purpose. There are secret findings in here. Um, and it's the sale of three two two nine Blakely Avenue Buchanan and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract, and this is the property that the village has owned for many, many, many years, and the board years ago had put that up for sale. And it never sold, I think some people who've lived here for a while remember seeing a big commercial sign on the property. Um, I know uh, when trustee Murray was here, he had asked for that to be put back up for sale. And we do have a buyer, and so this is the property on the corner of Blakely and nine A. So as you're taking a write-on to Blakely, that's the parcel there, it's a little less than an acre. Nineteen sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight and sixty-nine.
Yes, so the village has owned it for many, many years and um, there's really no use that the village can foresee in the future, do you have a property?
Uh, uh, just for the public information too, the board wanted to do an outreach, so we actually, the village did hire a real estate company to actually go out outreach, so there was a public outreach to get this thing done as well. We did receive two bids, the board entertained both interview too and thought this was the best interest of the village. But we'll make sure that people know it wasn't a real estate, it was actually publicized through a real estate agency, so I want to make sure the board, the public knew there was a public process for that as well.
Thank you, Marcus.
You know, I just wanted to ask a question, the environmental assessment form?
Mm-hmm.
It has um, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaealite, archaeological sites? On New York State Historic Pres- I'm on page two or three. And then it says yes. It says archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office, S H B O, archaeological site mandatory, and it says yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe because it's on over the post road and?
Oh, maybe, yeah.
Over the post road.
Oh, that's a good point, that's a good point, yep.
Yeah.
It could be a landmark there, but they're, they are close by.
That's true.
Yeah, I was just curious about that, I was just, hmm. And then there was one other, one other thing, um, and then it has question twenty on page run of two.
Maybe we.
Yeah, it says a remediation site.
Yeah, and it has former Indian Point, V A S F four, pencil light, and whatever that is.
Yes, I guess it could be surrounding.
Yeah, not that property, surrounding properties.
Yeah, I just, I just had those questions.
Go back to your other question, I think there's, I think there's a landmark, there's a uh, a myomar, a historical myomar over there.
You might be right.
Yeah, that's true.
I could be wrong, but.
Hmm, it's probably buried in the, in the uh,
Yeah.
The bank there somewhere. Right, thank you. So whereas the Village Buchanan is a duly constituted municipal entity incorporated in nineteen twenty-eight and is currently governed by a duly elected mayor and board of trustees, and whereas the village owns properties located uh, known as three two two nine Blakely Avenue, shown on the local tax map as section forty-three point one, block one, lots five and six, subject property, together consisting of point eighty-eight acre, so it's not a full acre, which it now seeks to sell as surplus land. Whereas the village acquired title to lot five by deed from George Elgin and Eileen Elgin to the Village Buchanan dated March first nineteen sixty-eight and recorded with the Westchester County clerk land records at library six seven six eight, page one fifty-five. And whereas the village acquired lot, title to lot six by deed from Rose Harbola, a surviving tenant by the entirety to the Village Buchanan dated March fourteenth nineteen sixty-nine and recorded with the Westchester County clerk land records as at library six eight four four, page six eighty-two. And whereas the village lots are unimproved and the above referenced deeds do not contain any limitation or dedication limiting the use of carousels. And whereas the village has never made any material use of the subject property. And whereas New York State law one dash one oh two authorizes the village to sell real property which is no longer needed for municipal purposes with the method of sale chosen being within the sound discretion of the board. And whereas the village of boards, the Board of Trustees Board commissioned an independent appraisal on behalf of the village, which was prepared by Valuation Plus Inc., eight seventy-five Mamaroneck Avenue, Mamaroneck, New York, dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, whereas the village appraisal, appraisal inclined that the subject property has a value of a hundred ninety thousand. And whereas the board has engaged in a process of seeking bids for the sale of the subject property. And whereas the board is entrusted with a fiduciary duty to secure the best price obtainable in its judgment or on the most beneficial terms in the public interest or any lawful use. And whereas the board received the highest offer of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand from Jane Associates, Brookfield, Connecticut. So that is the purchaser seeking to develop ten townhouse units on the subject property, subject to site plan approval and any other necessary board approvals. And whereas the sale of the subject property is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the board has called to be prepared in an environmental assessment form, parts one, two, and three. And whereas the village board is the only agency with the ability to implement and conduct the proposed action and hereby declares itself to be the lead agency with respect to the proposed action. Whereas the proposa- proposed action is unlisted action as that term is defined under CECL and that after review of the complete E A F, and be the environmental form does hereby make a determination that the proposed action will not have an inverse impact on, an adverse impact on the environment. Now therefore be resolved based on the foregoing findings of the board as to the lack of any environmental impact resulting from the sale of the subject property that the board adopts a negative declaration under CECL, finding that the proposed action will have no adverse environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the board has determined that the public good will be served and the public interest requires this resolution declare the subject property no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorize the board under New York State Village Law one dash one oh two to sell the subject property as shown in the legal description to be provided by the prospective purchaser and reviewed by the village attorney in order to convey same. Be it further resolved that upon adoption of this resolution, the village attorney is authorized to negotiate a contract of sale with the purchaser for three hundred and eighty-eight thousand and to submit same to the village mayor for signature together with any other documents necessary respectively to transfer the title to the subject property. So I make a motion?
Yeah.
To approve this? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the next is whoops. Sorry, this is the one on the village treasurer position. Hmm, where did you go? You go? Yeah, I don't know, I think, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm. Yeah, I'm just looking for.
That is?
Yep.
Oh, right.
Sorry. So um, the board had a discussion around budget time. And they was, they felt it was necessary to um hire a treasurer. And um, we are just approving this evening um, creating the position of deputy treasurer, I'm sorry, not treasurer, Cindy's the treasurer. Creating the position of deputy treasurer um, as required by Westchester County Civil Service. So I'm gonna have, I don't think we read last time, Dan. So I'm gonna have Dan read that for us, thank you, Dan.
So this is the Village of Buchanan Resolution, creating the position of deputy treasurer as required by Westchester County Civil Service. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan has determined it is in their public interest to create the position of deputy treasurer, and whereas the County of Westchester Civil Service informed the village that in order to create the position of deputy treasurer, the village Board of Trustees will have to adopt the resolution, creating the position including duties for this position. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees, which is to comply with all civil service law, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village Buchanan as follows. The Village Board does this by, does, by this resolution approves the creation of the position of deputy treasurer, which will be a full-time non-compete position. The duties of deputy treasurer will be as follows. The deputy treasurer works under the direction of the vil- village treasurer. The deputy treasurer is responsible for recounting, collection, custody, and discretion of village treasury. Duties include but are not limited to maintenance of general ledger, payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, tax filings, collections, water filling, collections, and other duties as assigned. The deputy treasurer may act for and on the behalf of the village treasurer. Though in the treasurer's absence, the deputy treasurer will have the pu- have all the powers and duties of the treasurer. This resolution has become effective upon its adoption by a majority of members of the Village Board.
Thank you, Dan. So on a motion to approve, can I have a second?
Second.
On, on a question?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next, Marcus, is I'm gonna have you do this, the awarding the, the um, the bid for the village coal boiler.
Sure, um, just to remind everybody, we actually, this is the second time around, we actually bid out the oil boiler that we have, we have probably from the sixties or seventies, you know, old cast iron oil burner. Um, we also have a three thousand tank, uh, tank oil tank in, in underground, which is also a concern, so we had to bid um, probably a year, a year ago, uh, we got some bids that were pretty high, the board rejected the bid. So we went to the second time around, and we received the bids again. Uh, we have an engineer by the name of Edison who has reviewed all the bids, has recommended um, a bid award to the village board. He attended at the last workshop, um, explained what the process was, why he recommends two high-efficiency gas boilers, that way only one works at certain temperatures, if it gets really cold, the other gas boiler would turn on. Lot more efficient, over and less fuel, which will be gas, which is oil. Um, also wind up saving money over the long term, and also we eliminate a potential liability with a three thousand tank boiler that's been in the ground since nineteen. Oh, sorry, three thousand gallon tank, that's been in the ground since the nineteen seventies, so um, he recommends it. The board asked a question, hopefully the board approved this. Of course, the work will not be able to take place until the springtime. Um, I've contacted Con Edison to take a look at, with the boiler, it's one thing, Con Edison wants to put the, put the piping in to the building, put a meter in, we'll do the trenching, so we're gonna be working on that and see what work we can get done during the winter, and in the spring breaks, get everything done, so that's the game plan at this point.
Quite an old boiler, it's time, it's time. I bet our money's worth that on that one too.
And we have not found any, so just to let the public know, there's no, there is no sign of any kind of uh, hazards leak or anything around the old tank, we're just doing it to upgrade.
Absolutely correct, the gas, the oil bomb tank actually gets te- pressure tested uh, every year. And, how's what?
Thirty.
Yes, thirty years old, sorry, and it gets tested every year and is passed every year, so the hopes are then, there'll be no issues with that, we'll remove it and takes away potential liability, absolutely, thank you for saying that.
So I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for the village coal boiler to New York Home Maintenance at the base bid of two sixty-six, five seventy-seven, so two hundred sixty-five thousand and five hundred seventy-seven dollars. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, i- if I may, I want to just add one addition, even when somebody get two hundred sixty-six thousand, which everybody understands through, that the board discussed on a couple meetings, about two grants to receive, the total of two hundred thousand. So that, so I want people to understand, we got a two hundred thousand on the grant to offset that, so the impact to the taxpayers will be substantially reduced um, by the grants, I want to thank the board to go in that direction, and that way we're spending less mon- less ta- less taxpayers' money to get this done at the same time, so.
And there's a dismal fund balance that would cover the rest of the.
Yeah. Correct.
Six thousand.
Correct. Yep, exactly.
So the majority of it is not taxpayer money at all, I mean, it is ultimately, it is.
Ultimately, it is, but.
It's not new tax money.
Yeah, so all the money is being paid for this, not, not one penny actually came out of taxes, it came from grants or money that I actually given to us by energy in the past, so actually there's no impact to the taxpayer, which is very good.
Thank you, Marcus.
All right, um, the next is, um, we've been very fortunate over the years, um, as we've had Buchanan Day, fashion must be, must be ten years now. Um, we've been very fortunate to get donations from Entergy. Um, now Holtech also gives us donations, this year was an exceptional year, we um, had gotten money from CertainTeague Gypsum Plant. Also uh, we got a five thousand dollar donation from Clear, Clean Path, it's Clear Path.
Clear Path.
Yeah, it says Clean Path there, Clear Path. And also um, from our planner, Dave Smith, um, he donated also two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Two fifty.
Too bitter, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I wish.
I was gonna say, wow, if that was the case, we could do a lot of, a lot with that stuff.
He was here, he was off his chair.
No, wait a minute, I didn't say two hundred fifty, sorry, sorry, I made a mistake there. So what we're going to do today is to make a motion to accept that. Tell Dave when you see him tomorrow, Cindy. He, he needs to write a bigger check. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to accept uh, ten thousand from Holtech, five thousand from CertainTeague, five thousand from Clear Path, and that's the company that's running that electric line from Delhi. It's coming through the area and headed to uh, Astoria Queens. And uh, two hundred fifty dollar donation from Dave Smith and Planning and Development Advisors for Buchanan Day and Recreation. Can I have a second? Do you accept that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next is a motion to approve a hazard communication policy, um. This is required for Perma, and Marcus is on the Perma board.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if you would like to um, like to go over that, or you want me to read just the general?
I think, well, just to give some update, again, I want to take any credit for this work, with Cindy worked on this very hard uh, with Perma and also our, our, our labor attorney to make sure that I have no issues and meet the state, this is actually a state requirement that we have to have this thing done. So I want to thank Cindy for the hard work that she did to get this thing done, and we can meet the sta- the standard of the requirements, so it will keep our employees safe, so I want to say that.
Thank you, Cindy, thanks.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
So the purpose of this instruction is to ensure that the Village Buchanan is compliant with the OSHA Hazard Communications Standard twenty-nine C F R nineteen-ten, twelve-hundred in the globally harmonized system of classification and labeling of chemicals. This program is intended to ensure that employees receive as much information as needed concerning the hazards of chemicals used in their workplace. The highway foreman is the overall coordinator of the facility. The highway foreman is the overall coordinator of the facility program acting as the representative of the. As acting as the representative of the village man- administrator who has overall responsibility. This program applies to any chemical which is known to be present in the workplace in such a manner that workers may be exposed under normal conditions of use. Or in a foreseeable emergency. All work, work areas that involve potential exposure to chemicals are part of the hazard communication program. So can I have a motion to approve the hazard communication policy? I have, I would like to make a motion to approve the hazard communication policy. Can I have a second, please? All in favor? So this is something, this is something we do every year, we hire seasonal employees. And um, for the fall season. I'm gonna be making a motion to hire two, two people for seasonal help. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the employment of Matthew Eichler and Martin Stewart. For seasonal help at the rate of fifteen dollars an hour starting October sixteenth and ending December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, this is, this is leaf season, so our leaf truck comes out that week of October sixteenth. So there's those guys will be on, on the leaf trucks. Okay, and Dan has abstained. Um, the next is. This is a change in the requirements for our parking spaces. And Marcus has done some research on that. So currently, or so what we're doing is, we're gonna call for a public hearing. Um, for a zoning text change, so we will have the public hearing at the November meeting. So we'll get into more detail, but it's, it's changing the size of the uh, parking spaces from. Well, it was twenty by ten, so changing it from to eighteen to eight and a half feet. So um, I'd like to make a motion scheduling the public hearing. For the zoning text change regarding parking spaces at the November, November seventh meeting. Second, thank you. All in favor? Alright, so we are down to. We're down to, where is my other paper here? We're down to, there's a potential for another grant. There's different grants that uh, Senator gets and also Assemblywoman uh, Levinburg. The grant from Senator Parkham this year was a pretty straightforward grant, and he was looking more for people to uh. The communities, the municipalities to buy EV vehicles or use it for EV um, charging systems. So we could not find anything, so with Parkham, so we put it towards the um. We put it towards our, our uh, boiler. So now there's another, there's another grant, and it's, it's due tomorrow. Um, I had sent this out to the board, and this is. Like I said, this is discretionary, so it's up to the Assemblywoman, so it's, it's not like a done, a definite like Parkham's was this year. So I don't know if the board had any thoughts on what they're thinking. For that we could use this for, it was like either a hundred and twenty-five or two hundred fifty thousand was the, was the dollar amount. There were two levels to this. Does anybody have any thoughts that we could?
I would look into using it maybe towards the pool. You know, that is a big asset of ours, and has a lot of problems, and it is a big undertaking to repair it. And it's something to look into, George is looking to it, I think, of, of, of multiple times and. I mean, I know, I don't know if there's a number on the repair. Um, but wha- whatever it could be, it may be consistent helping us get it done.
It, it was identified, it didn't need to be, um, it was identified in the needs assessment with the board, one of the, one of the assets. Worked on seasonally, Bob's worked on it a number of times to repair the pool pumps, we've done that a number of times, so. It's, it's in need of an upgrade, uh, it's been identified, and then we talked about getting a, a company in here to. Upgrade it and put anyone in the pool and do some other things, so it's, it's in need, definitely.
And what were the numbers, George, when you last looked into it?
Um, I don't have those on here.
They were significant.
They were significant.
Yes.
They were, they were up there. We're doing the pool deck was a, a big expense, we had an end time to end and give us number that we're important.
Yeah, this, this, well, it's, yeah, for infrastructure, but there's, there's um, different things here that we.
No, I, I'm into, a- anything for recreation is, is, is good, but I know our biggest asset and expense is the pool.
Yeah, so it's. Yeah, that's exactly right. So the mechanicals, the pumps have gone, last year we replaced it, we had to send it out, so all thanks to having rebuilt. Um, and then the pool deck is a problem, the kiddie pool is a problem. It doesn't work, it hasn't worked in a number of years, right?
Correct, yes. One thing I can just throw out there, but if we're looking at the capital projects, again, just to throw it out there is. That sewer issue we have, which fast sells, that's a ni- about a ninety thousand dollar repair. So that, and that's something that we're in the middle of, you know, George is working in the middle of that right now, and that's within that number. And that's something we can actually send to the state pretty easily, and that's within that hundred thousand, a hundred twenty-five thousand range. So just throwing that out there to.
Because that, uh, the, the money we spend jetting that, uh, we need to get that repaired.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, and we do have some department money that's over two, to put towards uh, sewer projects to. We got how much, ninety thousand dollars for the lining.
Correct. And just to go over the pool real quick, when we had the engineer, we're working on, but he said it could be three to four hundred thousand dollars. Not knowing what the requirements was law for the Department of Health, but what happens is with the Department of Health, when you touch it, you gotta bring everything up to code, Bob knows that. So like I say, it's almost like unknown until you actually start going into their system, so they might want the entire. Filtering system to be upgraded and stuff like that, so it's a real big unknown number for that.
I, I actually think they gave us a place of what, two hundred fifty thousand just for a sprinkler pad, correct?
In replace of the kiddie pool.
Yeah, that would be between two to two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to do a spray pool for the kids, we wanna do that, yeah.
My, my other consideration would be, you know, will we have the, the uh, capital improvement discussion? Um, Scott, our highway foreman had mentioned the possibility of some kind of a, another structure being.
Oh, yes, right.
We're definitely into that, so that's another area we consider.
I, I, yeah, that's, yeah, that's not a bad idea too.
Money, but I say we go out there and assume a grant and so.
And that's close to that, it's a little bit higher than that, but that will cover most of that cost too as well, that's right.
Yeah, that, that was on here, the a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's right. That's right, and that's for the concrete pad and the structure.
We also need backhoe to park in there.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, so deadline is tomorrow, I can do any one of those projects, so what, I know deadline's kinda short, so.
Good one, can we reallocate it, is it, is it set in stone?
That's a good point, because we've, we've, we've worked together on pro- on project and allow us to reallocate it mostly with the same framework of the allowable expenses. So what I can do is, we could pick any one of these right now.
Can we pick multiple and hand them into them and say, this is what we're, we're working on?
Yeah, the problem is the grant is on a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty thousand, so the problem is each one of these projects we talk about are, are beyond that amount of money. So we have to really pick one project, but uh, George, it makes the point, we can start the process, get to the deadline. Pick one of these projects, what do you prefer, and if the village board wants to change it, we go out to bid and the price is coming too high, and we can change it, go to a low back and stay in modifier. So we just pick one for now, we can, we can modify if you, if the board wishes to do that in the future. Before we actually go out and do the project.
Well, George, how many layer feet of pipe is that, that needs to be? Who cares? Well, it has to be replaced, yes, has to be replaced, yeah, yeah.
I wanna say it's like three.
Three hundred feet. And your price was a hundred?
Well, we, we have to redo our estimate, because we just got our um, survey back, and there's. We found some gas out there, we found some telephone out there, we found some other things, also trees. There's a culvert, there's, it's, it's, there's a lot more.
Well, that's what I mean, there's a fall on, it's on a state road.
It's on a state road.
Which the restoration is gonna be costly.
Yes.
And all of the other facilities that are in the area, I mean, it's, it's gonna be uh.
It, it's gonna climb up there.
Yeah, absolutely.
So uh, yeah, it's uh, we're gonna have to re, re look at that estimate, because. Uh, we have to support, and you know, the utilities, I'd say, they can down it. We brought up there's seven feet down, and they may be going under a culvert, so. It's, we're gonna have to get it to deep water, and it's gonna maybe get more complicated, so we'll have to see.
So what we could do, I'm just throwing that out there, we can apply for that one. Um, we can go out to bid, see what the numbers come out to be, and then simply we look at the structure that we wanna do. And then if the board wants to go with the structure versus this work, then we can actually say to modify what money they spent. So I just gotta pick one for now, knowing that we might be able to change it in the future, depending when the bids come in and help the board move forward.
Well, the one that's actually costing us money now is the sewer one.
Absolutely, so I think that.
Every day.
We have all that information.
Yes.
That is the one that takes the price.
I agree.
And this is, um, it says right here, water and sewer.
Yep, it does qualify. It's an easy run.
Yeah.
We'll start working and get the application in tomorrow, I got, I got the application form, fill it out and get it out. Perfect, thanks.
The pool's next though.
Yes, yes. Well, the group thing, we got the, we got recreation money inside aside for that too.
Can we use your recreation money, know you wanna. Save it, save it for something that, you know, really benefit the community, not that the pool doesn't.
Yeah.
But you know, if we can get a grant to fix the pool, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to go to Information Office of Service and Departments, Justice Information. September, one of the reports is nine hundred and thirteen. Uh, one is for, what is this, August? I think this is August, thirty-five hundred dollars. So these are the monies that the court collects that brings in, uh, they bring in. And then uh, this was for August, same thirty-three oh one, three thousand two hundred and one dollars. Police report, Steve, for August.
Thank you. The month of August, there was a hundred and sixty-six total calls, uh, particularly moving summons, uh, ten calls for service. They also had eleven metabolated, and uh, so we're. Nineteen property checks. Just wanna also mention, um, during the five K run. The officers out there, Chief uh, Pearl, he did an excellent job coordinating everything with uh, Sinatros Fire Department and Buchanan. Engine company, uh, get everything off and on.
I thought you were gonna say, I, I thought you were gonna say you, you won the race.
And Anthony, the highway report for August.
Uh, household garbage seventy-nine tons, bulk dumpsters, twenty tons. Uh, dumpsters only thirteen point nine tons. Two point twenty-two tons of metal, forty-four yards of chips, and we had thirteen TVs and eight monitors. Uh, they did a lot of work around just basically maintaining, cutting grass. Um, yeah, cut brush back from school zones. Uh. A lot of uh, some tree work at the circle. Uh, they were busy, they were busy doing a lot, a lot of cleaning up after uh, storms, uh, sand and washout on the streets. Um, you know, uh, maintenance after camp was finished. Uh, and, and uh, they had a lot, they had a lot going on, so um. Uh, anything I'm missing here, uh. That's it, they did a lot, they did, just like they do every, every month, they do, they do a lot, so.
And the wastewater report, treated wastewater, eight million, two hundred ninety-two thousand gallons. Sludge removal, eighty-four thousand five hundred. Um, there was a Westchester County Department of Health inspection, no violations reported. Um, there's uh, generators at the pump station, serviced by National Standby Generator. August twenty-fourth, um, hook, jet and cleaned Albany Post Road line for grease, belly and line, so that's. The one you're talking about.
Same one.
And also August twenty-fourth, he jetted uh, the Four Street to First Street line. Grease and rags, we continue to have a, an issue over in the Four Street area. And I know our highway, um, not our highway foreman, our wastewater foreman had come at the last meeting and told us. That there's some issues with people actually even throwing mops.
Mop heads.
Mop head, I, I. And this is not something new, this has been going on. So um, so that Albany Post Road Station and Four Street Pump Stations cleaned. And also the Lakewood Avenue Pump Station, so once again, we ask you, please do not be throwing mop heads and rags. And different things into, into the drains from your house, and also. Please don't be putting in any grease, because sometimes the grease builds up in the lines. And then we have to, when it goes over to the sewer treatment plant, that has to be processed too. So it's more expensive to, to do that, so we would ask everyone to please, you know, stop doing that. And um, we, we just, a couple of years ago, got a brand new uh, pump station on Four Street that cost us over a million dollars, so. We don't wanna see that fail. And uh, we have to replace it, or we have to do extensive work on that, so please, you know, um. I don't, I don't know what else to say, I, I think it's kind of obvious not to throw mop heads in, but that's another story. Um, Building Department.
Okay, uh, let's see, Peter issued eighteen permits uh, last month. He has twenty inspections are required to issue new permits. Uh, he has thirteen inspections on file for permits and compliance inspections. He issued eighteen certificate of vacancies. And he's just been busy chasing some other problems and complaints around.
Thank you. So Planning Board minutes, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, received and filed. Also the zoning, zoning board minutes of April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, received and filed. Uh, Dan, Buchanan engine for August twenty-twenty-three.
So uh, during the month of August, uh, they have zero structural fires, so that's a big thing. Four EMS assist, four uh, alarms, and uh, one motor vehicle accident. Um. Buchanan would also, the Buchanan company would also like to uh, state that they're in need of volunteers, so. Anybody who is willing to volunteer, call Chief Byhouse. Um, and that's it.
May, I may just wanna add one thing, I got a call from the fire chief saying, sorry, couldn't make it tonight, but I had a ma- a massive training. Mostly chiefs of Westchester County, we're running ba- uh, batteries, uh, lithium, lithium batteries of the fire, and based on the fires in New York City. And also battery storage plants, so it's a Western County training down, down in Bahala. Yeah, so all the fire chiefs are down there on the massive training, so you don't want the board to know that he would have been here tonight, but it wasn't for that training, so as long as you know.
That's fine. Get training too, that's important. Yeah, um, the prosecutor's report will do have it, it's received, and I believe our prosecutor will be in here, does he think? And uh, Charlie, your court, Stephanie, what do you have for us?
I have one minute for executive session, litigation.
Thank you, next question for?
Uh, since George is here, I'll let George give the board an update, we're on the paving and the um, the sewer line. Those are, they're giving an update on that.
At the workshop, we mentioned that the paving was gonna start on Monday, it started on Monday. And continue it today, and we'll keep going, and then we're gonna send the schedule to the Marcus. So that when they start working in the neighborhoods, they can give out the alert, and people know what the emergency line is gonna be doing. But right now, they're on board, waiting and working. So, uh, on the sewer lining, we mentioned that the um, workshop, that it's gonna start mid-October, and it's still on schedule, start maybe as well.
And on the sewer line is the point, if you, if you take, pay attention to the wastewater treatment plant, especially to heavy day, days in rain. We're over three to four hundred uh, gallons per, per day, which is pretty large. So hopefully when these sewer lines get lined, we'll see a difference, and we'll, hopefully that will help reduce the uh, the amount of water that has been treated. The worst thing to do, you're treating, you're treating stormwater, which is such a waste, yeah, so hopefully reduce that flow with the sewer line.
Yeah, there's been quite a bit of work done on that already, so. Little by little, getting there. Anything else, Marcus?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna go tonight, please bear with me. I, I have some things I couldn't say last week, so. Um, just some information, uh, Sharon will be putting up, uh, there's some childcare scholarships, fin- financial aid is not just for college. And um, it says here, you might be eligible if you earn up to seven, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty for a family of two. Ninety-nine thousand, four forty for a family of three, and a hundred and twenty. Ninety-nine thousand, four forty for a family of three and a hundred and twenty thousand for a family of four. So this might help some of the, some of our, our residents with childcare. Um, lantern bugs. The county does have a program for the municipalities. Um, we, I know I've heard a few people have seen some lantern bugs here in the village. We do not have a major problem like downtowny. Um, but we're eligible to borrow large bathrooms if, you know, the municipality is eligible to borrow large bathrooms if we, you know, have a problem with that. Um, the nine eleven ceremony, um, we had had it in, inside, uh, because of the, the weather raining, it's always raining at seams. Um, normally we would have it at the reaching through the shadow memorial at the Proton Landing, but we had it at one of the, the, uh, Proton on Hudson Fire Departments. And, um, it was nicely attended and it was, you know, a very nice ceremony because we, we need to remember those people that we, the innocent people that we lost that day. And, uh, Dan and Steve were in attendance. Um, a big thank you to the East Fishville Supervisor, Nick DeLisandro on the board. They, um, we found out, uh, through Mike Minor that they had a piece of equipment that we needed and it was surplus for them. So, um, they, uh, approved us to get it, the village become and get it. So I know a lot of people have been complaining that they haven't been able to see, I think, in, on Verizon, it's channel thirty. They haven't been able to see our meetings. So now that should, I think Mike Minor said this week, that should be up and running. And so we definitely, you know, we very much appreciate what these, these Fishville supervisor and board did for us. Um, it's not a cheap piece of equipment, but you know, we're grateful and thank you very much. Um, Buchanan Day. Thank you, thank you. That was, it was really a beautiful day. We had sunshine that day, believe it or not. And I'd like to thank our police department, our fire department, um, the beautification committee, the vendors, Six String Country. It was really a very nice community day. And before that, as Steve mentioned, we had our, well, the Buchanan Running Club had their first, um, five K. And I want to thank Steve that he really worked well with the running club and the police department coordinating everything and, and it ran very smoothly, you know? So I, I thank everyone that was involved in that. It really, it turned out great. I think it was over, how many people? It's over six.
Over seventy runners.
Over seventy runners that day. So if for a first run, it was a huge turnout. And then after that, you know, we, uh, had our Buchanan Day and everybody had hot dogs and hamburgers from the fire department and the, the police department. Gave out ice cream. So it was a true community day. We all worked together and it, it just made me so happy to see the community come together. Um, the beautification committee, I'm not sure if everyone has seen the circle yet. I think they've outdone themselves this time. It's, it's adorable. They, they decorated for Halloween. And there's ghosts out there and everything and they, they did a great job. So we appreciate you and thank you for everything that you have. What else do we have? Sorry, I, I just had a few, few things here. Um, October eleventh, um, this is something I've done before that, that before COVID. And then COVID changed our world. Um, but I had like a coffee with the mayor. So what I'm doing on October eleventh is donuts and cider with the mayor. Um, at six P M, we're gonna have the beautification committee come in, um, so that Bob can speak to them about the circle. And at six thirty, um, residents can come in. Next month, um, I'm looking to do, um, and I'd like to ask which board member would like to do that. Um, we're going to have something with the chief, ice cream or, or something with the chief. So another board member can, um, go and attend that with the chief. So it's just, you know, getting out there, listening to the residents, hearing what they thought to say, and it's, it's pretty good. You know, people do come out and they ask questions. This month I'd like to really go over what's happening at Indian Point with the decommissioning, what, what's, where we are with that. So any questions on that or any questions in general, I'd be very happy to answer. Um, October thirteenth, we're doing something a little different. It's going to be a scary movie night at the pavilion. There's gonna be popcorn. So, um, everyone's invited. I expect to see our, our, our board there watching the scary movies, eating popcorn. Helping, helping with hot dogs. We have hot dogs left from the Buchanan Day. So maybe we'll have some hot dogs too. Okay, October twenty-eighth. This is tricky for us because I don't know who's going to the, uh, Firehouse, uh, brunch. But October twenty-eighth at eleven A M, we do this every year. We have a trumpetry and the beautification committee is very involved in this. So they, they basically run this and do a lot of this. So it's gonna start at the pavilion, up First Street, left onto Tate Avenue to the Village Hall. If it rains, it's only at the pavilion. We're, we're not gonna be outside. So and then at twelve, um, the board has been invited to a brunch, um, that the Firehouse is having. Um, Dan, I know you mentioned a letter to the governor. I, I have been working on it a little bit. I have some thoughts. Um, I know you were very interested in doing that. So whenever you have time, I'd love to meet with you and just, we'll bounce off some, some ideas that we have. And Lisa Wentz, I, I have to thank her. Yeah, that was an excellent letter you sent to the governor. Lisa has been very, very involved, um, with the decommissioning and, um, so, um, she sent a letter to the governor. And, um, so, and then once we compile something, um, we'll bring it back to the board for approval or if they have any other input on that. And going to the workshop next month, um, I, I'd like to put on the agenda the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. It's, I know we're gonna be talking about it at the end of October because our, our newsletter goes out for November. And that's always the first Sunday, December fifth at six P M. We always have a holiday, holiday decorating contest. So this year I think the judges should be the board. So we'll come up with what the, what the different things are, you know, the, the most festive or whatever. And then the board can go out and have a list of these people who they think is, is the best one. And then that can be awarded at, uh, one of the meetings.
So I shouldn't really decorate like.
No, you should. You should.
But I'm out. I can't, I can't be involved in it.
I know. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. That's, that's, I'll abstain from that, but I'd still decorate.
Okay, good. But we'll put you as a honorable mention or something.
Didn't Mrs. Scott the copy better?
Oh, yes.
Mr. or Mrs.?
She helps. She points where to go.
Um, also at the workshop, um, there's been a request for a crosswalk on Bannon and Tate Avenue, the Kingsbury intersections. So, you know, um, we'll discuss that. Marcus has some information on that already. Um, there's people that have been saying that they almost hit at the, yeah, the Bannon and Kingsbury. And because you know what? They walk, they walk down Kingsbury, they walk past the library.
Yeah.
And they get to those intersections and could be a little dangerous there.
There's no sidewalk on the other side there.
Yeah.
No, I'll go in from sidewalk to sidewalk to Buchanan.
Cross Bannon.
Across Bannon or across Kingsbury?
No, across Bannon.
Oh, across Bannon. Oh, yeah, there is a, okay, yeah. Good idea.
Yeah. So that, that was a request from someone. They don't want anyone to get run over. Um, there's also, I want to ask you guys, there is another grant for records. Um, so what happens is a third party would come in, scan all the information in. So I don't know if the board is interested in going forward with something like that. So, um, uh, I'll get more information. Um, I think that would help. Yeah. I think that would help that gentleman over there in the building department.
I'm all for every grant we can get.
Yes.
Every penny.
Um, more the happier, right? Um, village entry signs, we'll also talk about that. And Dan, I know you had mentioned about the businesses paying for that. So I don't know if you would like to contact, you know, like Holtech, uh, Certainty. To see, with tail, see, you know, who's interested in, in contributing to that. Um, I think we always used to have one right, Bob, until, I don't know, it became Roadkill over at Lent's Cove. And, uh, somebody ran into that, I think several times. So.
I think the answer over there might be to put it in the island, I guess. Instead of the side of the.
Bob suggested we have to figure out exactly.
Yeah. Well, in the past where it was, it was in Peaceville's property. The island can be a pretty good target too. Yes, the signs are there now get.
Well, they put a dead smack in the middle of the island instead of.
What are we ending up?
Uh, red Russian Lance boat.
Grass.
Um, there's that little.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah.
Divides it there a little bit.
Any protection, bro.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a flower man again.
Oh, God. Yeah. So, yeah, wherever to put it, that it doesn't get run over because, oh my God. And then the other thing on the workshop I'd like to put on the agenda is, um, I'd like to have a discussion on the stranded act. Where that is and, um, what we can do going forward with that. And that's all I have. Where we're gonna start. Steve, what do you have for us tonight?
I don't have much, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for the information. Um, you know, in, in recent meetings, we've kind of discussed with the board, but you know, information or lack thereof. And, and I just, uh, I just hope going forward that, you know, we can all kind of work together and get all the information that we need and, and just kind of move forward. Um, you know, I, I was a little surprised by some of the events I saw come up. I just, you know, they, they sound great. And I just hope that, you know, going forward, we can just discuss it, you know, amongst ourselves.
Oh, like the recreation events?
Yeah, for, for the month of October.
So I'm just, um, I'm.
And I know we don't have a record.
Yeah, I'm just picking up the slack a little. That's all. I just, you know.
We all work together.
Yeah, that's fine. And then always remember, I'm available. I have a phone number, I have a doorbell. And I do answer email. So whenever, please call me. I'm, I'm always, I'm usually available.
Great.
Unless I'm brushing my teeth or something.
And, uh, Buchanan Day was a, a great event. The five K was a huge success. And I want to thank, uh, the Buchanan Running Club for organizing that. We met together. I think that's a great addition to the village. Um, it was a, a well-attended event.
John Bell.
Absolutely.
I'm the running club.
John Bell.
Yeah. So great idea. It was, it was really fun for the community. So thank you for being part of that too, Steve.
Thank you.
Dan, what do you have for us tonight?
Uh, the only thing I, just to reiterate what, what you hit on and what Steve hit on, Buchanan Day was, it was a great success. I, I mean, you, I, I was down there. I was pleasantly surprised at how many people were there just to enjoy your day, you know? It was, um, it was nice to see everybody out. Um, Buchanan Clambake, Bobby's probably gonna hit on this. That's this weekend. So, support local fire department, well, five typically Buchanan Clambake. Um, recreation position. I just wanted, really can talk about that, executive session, let me stay on that, get somebody higher, take over that position.
Mm-hmm.
I know there's been some interest, I think maybe one or two people, but, you know, I think sooner rather than later to add on that, you know, somebody up and running.
Oh, after.
Right.
Or another thing.
Right.
Or, you know, it's camping.
Yeah, and then you got the, the Christmas tree lighting, which is, you know, there's a little bit, there's a little bit of minutia involved in it. So, you know, organizing, getting it done, so.
I think the board can handle that issue.
Yeah.
I think it's incredible.
Having somebody there that, you know, to oversee it, I think would be a great thing. Um, and then just to hit on the letter to, uh, vocal, something to gather in relation to, uh, asking the state to reexamine the cessation fund being that the decommissioning has been put on hold over at Holtech. And, um, if, if that's something that, you know, uh, squeaking wheel gets the oil. So um, I don't think it will hurt at all. And we, again, to hit on Lisa, um, she's been up to give us some thoughts and notice on, uh, her perspective and anybody else that's willing to, you know, come forward with what the reports are, I, we're always here. So that's it.
Okay, cool. Thank you. What do you have for us, Anthony?
Uh, not much. Just a, uh, few things about the, um, the Buchanan Day was beautiful. Uh, everybody, the fire department, the police department, uh, uh, the beautification committee. Everybody that was there, whoever helped, thank you so much for your, your help. And, um, the beautification committee in the, in the circle, yes, it is, it's very nice. I do appreciate that, the hard work they put in. Looks nice, makes the village, uh, a nice environment in our circle. It's a, it's a center of attention. So it's nice to keep it going. I just want to touch base on something that happened last week in this, in, in my, um, just a brief statement to shed some light on why I reacted the way I did last week. Um, you know, my frustration with the village is that I, I am here as a public official. Um, and that's granted to me by the public. Uh, they, they elected me and the board to do what we do and we, we can work together good. The mayor disclosed a lot of information tonight, which I am very appreciative of. Um, and that's what I want moving forward. I just want to know what's going on. I don't want to be surprised, like grants, we need to know what grants are out there. We need to know how we can utilize them to benefit the village. That's all we're asking. Um, I, 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 there was one accusation though, that I have to touch on from last week, that I had private meetings with AMS. Um, I have shared all pertinent details of all those meetings to the board. I did it in, in, in so that we would try and stick to the, the overlay district that was, was, um, rezoned, uh, uh, three years ago in the overlay district, trying to get a, a, um, commercial piece component into that property. That was the conversation I had. Any other things that I've done, uh, I've only done to benefit the village. I would never do anything to uh, harm the village, uh, 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 anyway. And I hope that those accusations never come out again. Um, we are a board elected by you, the residents, and many of our functions is to communicate with each other, work with each other and to be transparent with each other and the public. Uh, we devote our personal time away from our spouses and children to help better the village for our families and community members. I speak for the enti- entire board a- as well as the mayor. And I am sorry for acting out the way I did last week. I was frustrated with some things that were going on, but they seem to be uh, clearing up and I am happy for that. So, um, moving forward, I'm, I'm hopeful that this board will be, uh, headed in the right direction. We have a slippery slope ahead of us, but I think we can get it done. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for the time and, uh, I hope we're all on agreeance with this moving forward. That's it.
It's important we work together.
Robert? My turn. I don't have much to say. I was, I was away for three weeks celebrating my birthday and my anniversary. So, uh, I really have too much. Thank you.
My celebration.
It's only, it's only a few years.
Now, no more, no more celebrating.
But I did hear a lot of good things about Buchanan Day. Uh, my daughter was down there. She ran a race. She was looking for Anthony, but she couldn't find him for some reason.
He was too fast.
I was ahead of everybody, right? They were leading the, leading the pack, right?
Flying.
But I, I heard a lot of good things about that. And just to reiterate what Anthony just said here, I do believe that the more information we share amongst ourselves, the board, the better off we're gonna benefit ourselves and the community. So, uh, I think transparency has a lot to do with everything. Not accusing anyone of doing anything wrong, because I haven't been in the board longer to really know what's going on. But, you know, uh, I've, I've been a board member over the Firehouse for many, many years. And once in a while you do go down that slope you don't want to go down to, but you know, you, you gotta do your best to rebound from that and move forward. And, uh, to follow up with Dan said about the Firehouse, I'm gonna spread about the Clambake, Dan. Thank you for reminding me about that. That is a Sunday. Tickets are hard to come by right now because it's getting late, but I can probably maneuver a few if someone wants a ticket to go, let me know. And, uh, Dan, to bring something else up in terms of what it was right now. So.
Well, we, we still have to go to the audience. So if you, you think of something.
That's okay. I, I think Dan covered some, we have to repeat what it said, so. But that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. I'm just gonna say communication is key. And that's, that's what stops a lot of issues. So we need to have two-way communication. So, and then I, I think the board can work together. And, uh, we've got a lot, lot of stuff to do. There's a lot going on. So, um, important that we work together. So, any comments from the audience? Everybody looks at I, why do they do that all the time? What?
Hi, Derek. Um, you listen, I live at one sixty-two first. So unfortunately I wasn't able to be here last month and I know that the vote about the special permit for the AMS development went on. And I just wanted to say that, um, I feel like this development is so important to the village and, you know, we didn't talk about it today within any of the agenda comments, but um, I was away, so I wasn't able to come to the meeting. I watched it on film videos. Um, and I was so disappointed to see how the vote went. I'm very disappointed that it was unanimous yes. Um, obviously a couple of you did speak about how you spoke to residents that were somewhere for it and some were against it or some liked the idea, some didn't. So I feel like since you represent us and you're, you're like carrying us, it's strange that if you heard both ways, that the vote was unanimous yes. Because it seems to me if I was on a trustee, some people liked the building, some people didn't, it seems like the compromise vote would be. Let the building go through, because investor, the real estate owner develops, needs to get that chance to make a development. But it seems like the vote would have ended, let it go through, but don't allow all these special accommodations. So why the five floors? Why the extra density? With that. But once again, if you're representing us, and that's what you've heard at the public hearings and from various residents. Why would you vote that other way? So obviously, I appreciate all your efforts, but I really just think we have to be really careful and only do smart logical development. And I know that I've now researched and learned of studies that show that developments like this often don't pay any money to the municipality's bottom line. So then what are we doing this for? If it could possibly be a tax negative instead of a revenue. By the time you pay all the associated costs, and I listened today to all the costs. Sewer, pump station, all of these things would be affected by the increase in population. It's not just about a concrete cost that goes to that property, it's all of these costs that are gonna affect and have their own. Implication to our bottom line. So I just don't understand how this building and letting it go through so tall, so big, so much density. Is smart for our village, so um. And we have all the faults, we have implications of it not being within like the type of building that we normally have. It being too tall, having traffic, so I just don't understand. My question that I can't wrap my head around is. What is the motivation? So is there something coming from the state? Is it something about affordable housing? Is it something about section eight? Is there something that are missing? Because I don't understand, I really just can't understand. The motivation for such a building, why the special accommodations to the developer? Instead of just staying with our code, which is already more commensurate than the old Massey plan, already was supposed to. To attribute, you know, be able to like, let us have some additional development, why then did we go past that? I just, once again, I just want to understand the motivation. Um, and the same thing, like I didn't see the meeting, the workshop meeting that was last week, I don't know what all this. Ruh-ha-ha was, I will watch it. Um, but the same way you guys want all the communication between each other. We want it too, and I still go, like in my own street, um, you know, I live on First Street. And people on my street, Dan, we're on First Street together. People on my street that are live right between your house and my house do not know about this. So, I really don't understand if it was so important that you guys had to take the voting on this away from planners. From what I understand, this is the first time this has been done in history of the village, the first time it was ever done. Is that true, that like, something where you guys took over the vote instead of it being the planning team? I don't know if I'm speaking you correctly or right.
The village board, yes, became lead agency instead of the planning board.
And is that the first time that's ever happened in the history of our village?
In this community, yes.
Yes, okay. So if that's the first time it's ever happened in the history of our village. That just shows that you guys also know how huge and important this is, or you wouldn't have done that, you wouldn't have taken that vote away from them and had it. Had the oversight be on your side. So if we all know then that this is so huge for our village. I still don't understand why, why there wasn't a mailing to the village residents, why there wasn't more discussion. Why there was only two public hearings in the summer, when even the developers said, thank you for closing, thank you for having the second public hearing in August. Or July, sorry. I forget when the first one, the second was, July and August, was it? Um, the, I remember the developer said, oh, oftentimes villagers don't have it in the summer, because so many people are on vacation. So here we had our second public hearing, when even the developer was kind of surprised by the statement that he made. So, also, I. I wanted to ask, like, I don't know who would answer this, but. Um, when I drive around other communities, I see like, I know it was in Portland, there was some big development going on over. On one twenty-nine on Maple, and there's a huge sign, it's gotta be like five feet by five feet, an orange sign. Public hearing date, blah blah blah. Did we have those signs at this property? Were we supposed to?
But we should just keep in mind, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I'm sorry.
But we haven't received a site plan yet.
Okay.
What was voted on was only for the special permit to change the zoning text amendment, that's all. We haven't even received a site plan from them.
Wait, but.
We will at some point.
Be going, does that mean that developer is already approved to do this four stories on top of the one story? And have as many units? Is that already approved or not already approved? It's hard, uh, it's really hard for a resident to understand this, honestly. And I know we keep asking for clarity. On the bulletins, or maybe something even more pronounced than that, like a separate flyer just about this building. Or um, you know, more discussion with our neighbors or something. But I I don't, I don't even understand that, like, have they already got the go-ahead to do garage and four flights?
They have to still submit an actual site plan, a plan as to what they're going to do. We haven't received that yet.
But like, is it okay, is it going to be approved at a hundred and forty-eight units?
We don't know if anything will be approved at this.
Okay. So the other question I have is, I know that at the second public hearing, there was um, a resident, I think he. I think his name is Bob, was on Lindsey, and he spoke pretty passionately about, could this be a vote to the residents? And he didn't, he just used the word vote, can we vote on it? Does it have to be four? Can we vote on it? He was told, no, 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 I think, you know, voices got raised or whatever. My question is, is there any point in this process where the residents can vote? And I've since learned that there's this word called referendum. Is this applicable to be put to the residents? Is this applicable to be a referendum? Um, and once again, I don't know. I mean, is it, is it, or is this really going to be only voted on by the board and. How can there be more input from the residents about this?
There might be additional of what's hearing, that we will hear from other residents, and there will be. Uh, a sign placed in front. With any project.
When they finally apply for a site plan, there'll be a, there'll be a notice on the property, and there'll be public notices noticed, and there'll be presentation to the public. Public comment, we will take that on, and then decide what the, what the overall logic gonna be.
Will receive the card like somebody putting up a.
Two hundred feet, yep, that's right.
That will happen.
That will happen, we haven't gotten to that point.
Okay. I just, um, as a former finance person in my career, I still don't understand. When I look at this building and the profitability of this building, or the gain to the residents, like just, I'm missing that part, and I know a lot of people that I speak to. Don't understand that part either. Like, if it's two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of village tax revenue. But we know there's going to be costs, whatever they would be, policemen, police, overtime. Roads, improvements, whatever, sewer, pipeline, pool, office people, whatever it is, like. I think, where is the benefit to the village? When you get through all of those expenses on the two fifty-five, where's the benefit? And why, and are we sure that that's worth the cost that it would be to the village? The cost of traffic, the cost of all these extra people. That's already a very, Lindsey and Albany Post Road is already a very, very busy intersection. Along that stretch, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of, a lot of time. Um, I also think it's a little bit of a dangerous intersection, because there's stop sign. That curves to the Gallagher side, and the stop sign coming from the Lindsey side. So where is, I just, for that amount of revenue, where's the benefit?
Those are all tough questions that the board will have to answer going through the, this process. The public will be part of, of helping us with that decision.
Let me just add that any sewer improvements, water improvements, the developer has to pay for that. Um, so any improvement to the system has to be paid by the developer. Route nine eight to road, if any improvement has to be done, through an DOT, the the developer has to do, has to make those improvements as well. Um, George knows, and then George, you can, I see you want to say someone, but no, that's paid by the developer.
So as part of the CECO process, isn't they environmental quality review act, um, they do um, review. Um, the economic analysis, there's an economic section, there's a traffic section, there's a. Site development section to address all the points that you bring up. So they're gonna look at. If they need another policeman, they're gonna look at if they need another ambulance, they're gonna look at how many calls there are. They've already done a traffic analysis, somewhat of a traffic analysis, and then what they're consulting, and they're giving them some, um, giving the board some preliminary information. About uh, what the traffic's been doing, what the impact's been doing. Right now, they've got, they've received just enough information to make the decision on the change of. What was the?
Zoning.
Zone, the text amendment. That was a separate process, now we're going into another process, and um, all your current questions. Uh, will should be the answer that, through that process.
So one question developer can't answer, and that really is up to the board, and hopefully. The residents through the board, because you voted for you all, and you represent us, and you do all this hard work, and hopefully. We'll take into account this, the residents' opinions, but like, the qualitative difference was very spoken out against. In the first public hearing, people are like, we won't have a village to protect if you don't, if you make all these changes. Keep the village charm, keep the village quieter, don't, so. That part is not really a, of the developer or AMS. That is like something that. I hope the board can really, really find out from residents how they feel. Because I know residents, I've spoken to, I've spoken to seniors, I've spoken to neighbors, I've spoken to people, they. I don't come across people that want the five-story building, so I know some of you have said that you do. I don't, I mean. One of the only people, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't come across it. Everyone's like, I don't want that, like, nobody wants it. So I'm not sure who is all these people that think it's the greatest, the great idea.
Well, Lisa, where are they? I mean, you found out about this meeting.
Yes.
Tell them to come and listen to the public hearings on moving forward. I mean, that's the only thing, I mean, we'd love to hear from them, but you're saying they're out there. I don't, I don't know them.
So I think people have this impression that this is already like a signed deal, like. And that's why I didn't even know what she was saying, but I really did miss the meeting, I really did, I was disappointed by the vote. I really don't want to see our village change that much. I do realize we have to do, we are doing development, and like I said, landlords. Deserve to develop their land, and um, developers get to come in and show us their proposals, but. Why, why not more like townhouses? Why not smaller things? Why not things that fit into. The type of buildings we have versus something so large, so many cars, you're in a drive-by. Hardware store and just drive by like cars, parks, like, I don't know, that's, we're like, much more of a little. We're special, we're like, I don't know, we're version of Mayberry, you know, we're like a little bit quieter, a little bit more country, we're one of the most. Our, unless we're changing our identity, we don't want to no longer be like the rural part of of Westchester, like, that's part of what makes us so special. You know, people don't come because they say, I don't want to say what they say, but they say things like. That's a done deal, they already made their mind up, da-da-da-da-da, is there something going on, the table, like, people give me all kinds of reasons. And I'm really hoping that you guys will just really reconsider this. And I don't want to think anything negative, I want to think positive, and you just want to do all those wonderful things that happen in our village. Buchanan Day, everything else, the running, I wish I could have made that, I was in Jersey for the weekend, maybe I'll start training for next year. But it's so great, and I just. I don't know, please be careful.
I'm gonna ask you a question, did you say you found this research where development like this actually cost the municipality money? Could you give me a list of those municipalities, so I can double check those numbers, if you don't mind?
Yes, I.
Thank you.
And I, so I didn't specifically read the research, I heard it from other people that used to be. Servants of our village or other. But I can try to find.
Yeah, I could, yeah, I can tell you developments I've seen in my career, they're all, they're all, were in the black for the develop, for the, now that the municipality voted for the school district. So if you have one example that was a negative, I would love to hear it, and I would like to talk to that municipality.
Well, once again, I, what I said at the public hearing when I spoke last time, what, or the second time, this first time I didn't, I had too many questions, but, I mean. If you take every budget line on our, on our budget, and you say. Ten to fifteen percent increase in our population, you have to say that there are going to be budget lines that are going to have an increase.
Not, not necessarily true, we've had that discussion, it'll be private garbage collection, it'll be totally sprinkled. It's about high-end rental income that's gonna come in. So, so the people that I've seen in our communities, Sleepy Hollow, Terry Town. Dobbs Ferry, Irvington, all those developers were positive. Financially, whatever you want to discuss about the development itself, I'm just talking about the numbers. Financially, was a positive though for the school district. As well as their municipality, so if there's an example of one that was actually negative, I would like to see.
This is not gonna have any impact on our pump station, on our sewers, on our.
Absolutely, and that additional income that's coming from those taxes will also be that additional cost.
I, I understand, but once again, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, you have to eat away some of it. We still don't know if there really is going to be police overtime or.
But you have to understand. They'll pay for the water, they're, they're, they'll be paying for the water separately, we have separate water though, so.
And tear on our systems. It's, there has to be wear and tear on our systems, you can't just increase the population by twenty percent here, twenty percent here, it's not anymore just.
So any developer will have wear and tear on the system, I mean, no matter how, what the size, it's gonna have to wear and tear on the system, no matter what we develop, whether it's three stories. Could be three buildings at three stories, is that something that you would like?
Well, I, I.
Is it the five stories that you don't like?
I think we, I believe we have like a code, and this was our.
So if we put the three stories, and three buildings, and still had the same density, it would still the same wear and tear?
To the lower density, if it's only a certain amount of acreage, and the code called for a certain building height and a certain density. Then we should have stayed with that. Why are we going so much over and above what we? When I say we, I mean us, because I'm part of the village, and obviously it was the, some planning committee at some point that came up with. The way that the rules were without giving a special permit. So why the increased density? Why so much more? Especially since it's our first venture into development in a long time, you just. And then there's gonna be ones to follow, and are, I, is, are all these things going to get rented? And is there going to be a backlash and it has to go to um, section eight or something else?
So, mu- can you just touch on that, because the numbers for, for uh, low-income housing, you'd be above.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the, the proposed rent, the cost of the construction, the infrastructure. The type of construction they're doing, the pool, the, the gym and everything else, it's gonna demand high rents, which is way above section eight. Each section of housing.
But not only that, with the density itself, will put us in a different class, I wonder for our village size?
For, for um.
It'll increase our population.
Increase your population, which would, would give us. For low income to come in the area would be over that.
That was for the, the governor's um, initiative that she was trying.
For the governors.
Yeah, which was, which was, which was killed, yeah. Which was killed, I know, but that's what I'm saying, like, if that comes back again, I mean, it would put us over that, um, that number that she had in mind.
Oh, that's correct, that's correct.
So, but what I want to say, because you're talking about the section eight, you're talking about affordable housing. Yes. We are one of very few communities in Westchester County, like, they, a lot of communities. Wanted to sign on for grants and different things, we're like maybe one of three or four communities that does not have that requirement for the builders. So there is no affordable housing um, component to any buildings that would go on there.
Actually, further to my question, so like, we didn't do it the way we're looking at the grants. We didn't opt into this plan to like, a lot, we have the components that's affordable, and so because we didn't opt into that. Like, we're not, the villages that didn't opt into that before you just explained, because we didn't opt into that, we're not getting the extra grants related to that, we're not getting the extra gifts, whatever. So, or whatever to our, whatever would be that comes along with making that agreement.
Be careful with that too, yeah, I spoke to the mayor of Mount Vernon, yes. And I, I will tell you, she's not happy with the affordable housing herself, because remember when you have affordable housing, you have to give discounts? So the developer not only gets grants, but there's, there's like discounts that go on, so it's not a benefit for the.
So.
Okay, man, I'm, I'm gonna add, if you want to add on that, the amount of taxes they pay is half or a third of what an average taxpayer pays as well. So therefore, other, so other taxpayers.
No, we all understand.
Yeah, okay, I was, let me show you your stuff to the.
All I'm saying is, we didn't do it that way, so we're not getting the benefits that supposedly come with that. Correct, so, so we're not doing that, right?
No.
So because we're not doing that, what is our assurances that we're really going to fill these buildings? At, do we have any assurances that the market rate is really going to, and then the guy, the AMS guy that spoke, he was really nice. So this proposal on us, and you know, everything, they're gonna be high-end, are they gonna be like terraces on the Hudson, like the old Avalon? So this proposal on us and, you know, everything, they're gonna be high-end. Are they gonna be like terraces on the Hudson, like the old Avalon? Is it gonna be like that kind of rents, like twenty-eight hundred for one bedrooms, thirty-eight hundred for two bedrooms, whatever? I don't know the exact numbers, but. Are they, are we really gonna get that? Or are they gonna be vacant and then somehow we're gonna get forced to do what lower ones? I, I just, I don't know. These are, once again, I'm just listening, I'm talking to people. And I'm hearing these, some of these concerns, like they're not gonna fill it. Nobody's gonna want, they're not gonna need, there's many people that wanna live back there. There's nothing special about it. It's not a river view, blah, blah, blah. You're facing, I do, I know someone said, oh, there's power lines back there. Some of us are like, there isn't. I did see the power lines. And I know it's nine A, which is Albany Post Road. I don't know. What's, is that special enough to demand Avalon rates? And if it is not, then what happens when it's vacant? I know there's a lot of negative stuff going on right now. With things that aren't filled or whatever. So do we have any assurances that? The developer truly is going to stick to these higher rates? If they don't get the rents, then what happens? And will we then somehow, I don't know, get affordable housing or nothing wrong with that per se, but. I don't think we should be presenting it one way if we, you know, if we know it might go the other way. So I just. Once again, I don't understand the logic issue because to me, two hundred fifty-five thousand with all the associated expenses and things we don't know about. We have not done a building like this in this village. So how do we know? We don't know. I mean, it's the first time we're doing it in a long time, in a long time. We've said that. Also, like to start with such a huge building. With only two hundred fifty-five thousand revenue that could easily be eaten up by things we don't even know about. I know Marcus has experience in other communities, but does that? I don't know if it translates exactly. So honestly, there's a lot of concerns.
So Lisa, then I think when the site plan, I, I think, you know, the people you're talking to, everyone, if you could communicate to them about the site plan and we'll. We'll do our best on our end, like we do Facebook, we do um, one of those different things and.
Just to, uh, it'll be, it'll be on newsletter. Everybody gets a newsletter. So the public, any public hearing is on the newsletter and. And so that's on, everybody should receive that as well.
So thank you for that. And just to keep going back to that one more time, the, there was various requests for newsletters to be a little more clear. So the newsletter will say something like, oh, no cartons go with this recycling and not that recycling. That's really clear. But as far as that this was gonna be discussed at this public hearing, then it wasn't really clear. And then the second public hearing, it wasn't really clear again. So like, use the same language used for no cartons go with this recycling or that. Will be discussed. AMS potential building for plus stories, you know? Really clear.
Make it clear that site plan review for the AMS project. Site plan review for potential five-story building across from Lindsay, Lindsay Avenue. I mean, that would be really clear. There's some people that do the newsletter are in the room at this point. So, you know, we'll. We're trying to like use the terms that have to do with zoning and ordinance and that. That is not as clear to the people. I keep. That has come up multiple times and it's still not as clear.
Well, if I can do that for a second.
Yes.
Now, I appreciate everything you're saying. I, I hear what your uh concerns are. I talked to a lot of people that are for, that's just what I'm hearing.
Okay.
I do hear a couple of people, but I'm hearing more people are for it than that. Uh, just to clear one thing up, there's been two public hearings this summer, but this has been going on. How long has it been on the table here? Long time. So. I love to see people come to the meeting. It make, it would make our job a little easier hearing both sides of the story when people are here and not here and people say I talk to somebody. It's like you, I'm telling you the same thing I'm hearing from you.
I know, I know.
You know, so I appreciate you, I, I appreciate you coming here respectfully, talking to us about it. I think it's great that we're hearing it this way, not being attacked about it.
No, I don't wanna.
And we're hearing, and to follow what Steve said, we're just in the beginning stage of all this. You know, and there's nothing set in stone right now.
And, and to touch, I, I did talk to some of the people and I'm surprised to have they, they didn't know. Because this has been going on since eighteen months. I first got it.
As they say, spread the word.
So it started last April. And it's been discussed in pretty much every meeting.
They didn't know about this because it's, it's been talked about and it's been, there's been public hearings on it and it's, you know. So, you know, all I can tell people is to, you know, if you have questions, you have concerns, you have to come to me those. Because we're making decisions based upon, you know, what the interaction is with people that get up with concerns.
Correct. But can I also say, the public hearing interactions were majority negative. The public hearing interactions, the speakers, no, it wasn't just two people. The first public hearing had numerous people, the retired policeman. The uh former trustee, the, you know, the, the next public hearing, I know I had a guy from Lindsay. I know I spoke against it. There was more than just two people. It was, no, it was more than four people and the other people that were in the room to the back row. Also were vocal when the negative, when they, when they, when there was negative talk about it. They were vocal, they agreed. The public hearing, I mean, I'll watch them again with someone if they'll watch it with me and in Italian. They were, they were vastly negative. The public hearings, there was only one or two people that said, I don't really know about this, but I'll try to learn about it. Everyone else was negative. I'll go back and watch them again and do like a tally, but it wasn't just two and it wasn't just four.
And even if it was ten, I mean, there's, there's over two thousand residents in the village.
I know, but that's representative. Why are you taking that like that's the only people that ever gets it?
Cause I talk to people that are for it.
You do?
I do. And it's important that I hear that because that's what motivates me to keep following through with what I hear. And, and the information that we share with each other here is information that benefits the village. You know, when you come up here and give us the negative facts, I appreciate that. I do. I do. I accept it. And, and that's what I wanna hear. I wanna hear. Like the negative parts from the community that would, makes me think, well, am I doing the right thing? Am I not doing the right thing? But ultimately, I feel that this decision is better for the village. I really do. And, and that's the way I feel. It may not be the way Bob feels, but that's the way I feel. Uh, we've all voted yes on everything that has come through. So I'm assuming that everybody feels the same way I do. But if you from the public come here and, and bring more people with you, and I can see it, 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 it's gonna help the process. Moving forward. This has started last April, last April. And that's eighteen months. And we've had discussed some fashion of this in every meeting. Every meeting. And it's also gone on in the planning board meetings, which, you know, you're, you can attend as well. You know, anybody can attend. And that's why, you know, you're here now, but we, we've moved forward. And, but we're not at, we're not a definitive answer yet, but we're just, we're just seeing what we can do. And I, I appreciate you coming up here. I appreciate everybody coming. But, you know, we need, be more vocal, get people that are more vocal, give us what they want. I mean, we, we, we have to do something to, to stabilize this village. You know where we, how we've been impacted with the closing of the power plant.
I do.
So we have to do something to stabilize this. And that property has been vacant since I've been here all my life and it's always been vacant. And uh, they came in with the steep slopes and everything that was involved. They, they, we, we helped them organize a building that would work. And that, that's where we ended up with the five-story and the density where, the way it is. Now, Carbone up the street, his buildings are a little different. The way they're set up is a little different, but his impact on the street is gonna be comparable to what's gonna happen with them. I mean, he's got an intersection there where he's gonna have to put crosswalks in and, and enclosures and. A, a left lane, turning lanes and stuff like that in front of the high school. I don't hear anybody say anything about that.
I think people just aren't there yet.
Well, it's, it's happening. It's happening just as much as this is happening.
I get it. When you say you've spoken to people that are for it, what exactly, enlighten me, like what are they for? So they're for like lots of additional, I'm, I'm being tried.
Well, yeah, I mean. The, for development, for helping the village. I mean, when you bring people, you bring in a commercial. Ambiance, like maybe you'll bring in some more commercial businesses that would make the village a, I don't know, more of a community base. Well, you know, we don't, we don't have much of anything. When you go out to dinner, where you go, Pouch House?
Yeah.
Cause that's it. That's it. Okay. We, we're trying to make this village a little more than that.
So, so they like it because it's gonna make the roads livelier?
Well, maybe in some, some uh aspect, it'll make it livelier. But if you bring people, you have to bring businesses to support these people. They need things to, to live on. So the local community uh, uh businesses will gain from it. Um, they'll build more facilities that will get on the tax roll as well. I mean, you have to start somewhere. And this was someplace that we thought was a good place to start. Being at that property has been vacant for so long. And if you don't allow them to put that density in there and, and the, the price of those apartments, you're not gonna get anybody to build in there. It'll stay vacant forever, but. And that, that's the key to it, is the density has to be there for them to make money to actually build something. And yeah, they may stay vacant some of the apartments, but I could tell you right now, if I'm paying three thousand dollars for an apartment. Sec, uh, the low income's not, they're not gonna, if they spend forty million on the project, they're not gonna start letting these apartments go away for nothing. Especially to, to a state-funded uh, uh rent. So I, I, I'm not worried about that at all.
Marcus, when is the estimated time that the site plan will be submitted? I know that's what we're waiting for. Should it be November or?
Yeah, I think it's not done. Yep. But getting back to what you said before about it's the first time, there's gonna be a lot of first times this village coming up. A lot of first times because we're in a position now where if we ever get property available to us over there, entries property, whole tax property. We'll be having the same discussion about other things over there. We're talking about doing a, I believe, a master, another master plan. So there's an opportunity to get involved that way. But I, like I said, I think that the more people that come here, the better it is. Whether they agree with me or not, that doesn't bother me at all. We can respectfully talk about it and work things out as a community. Because there's gonna be a lot of firsts here that we're gonna have to address whether we like it or not. And there's gonna be some tough decisions made whether we like it or not. We got, we got tax issues coming up. We know that about that. We got our secession fund running dry. Unless we get something changed somehow. We have the uh. The pilot program we have to renegotiate. There's a lot of things that we have to do. So, and it's all to keep the village, the village. It's not to make the village go away. It's to keep the village as it is. But we wanna maintain our, our status as a village. We have to make certain concessions, I think. Uh, I'm not saying I'm conceding to, to a developer. I'm, I'm listening to the developer right now and I, and everyone in this room that knows me, I've been in meetings here for forty years. I've been in every room by my, that, by myself many a times. And I don't know if, if it's the dynamics in the village have changed, but when something big was going down. Sixteen months ago, this room was full. Now, this is what we have. It's, it's, it's sad to me. Because it, I don't, like I said, I know this dynamics of all that I have is selling, people coming in, don't care or aren't informed. But I think a lot of these houses being sold, people's taxes are going up. They're going up seventy-five percent over the last three years, four years. That's a big knock. So people have to understand something's going on. So come to a meeting, watch a meeting and see what's going on. You know, get the word out. You know, I, I, I've, I've been telling people all the time, way before I even even on the board, come to meetings. To me, they're fun. Just be heard. It's fun. At least you have a chance to, I, I, for twenty-five years, I didn't say anything. I worked for the village and, you know, you don't wanna work for the village and come here and.
Be pissed off the mayor.
Pissed off the mayor. Thank you. But, you know, but it's, it's great to see people that are more, that wanna know. It's, it's great to see you here, seeing me at the.
Yeah, I love your passion and how passionate you are. I mean, it's great. It really is. It's, it's important. I mean, intelligent, passionate, and you come up here with. Good data and I mean, I don't know how backed up your data is, but we'll find out.
No, just that one, but that came from a very reputable source, from someone that has been in government for many years. So I will get the studies for you.
That'd be great.
Um, but also I just, when people have in the past said, please save our village. I just wanna clarify, I think some people didn't mean, please save our status as. I think some people didn't mean so much the services as much they also know the character. So I don't, like I said, uh, uh, one of the public hearings, one of the gentlemen spoke up and said, he moved from Austin, he's a policeman, it's too crowded, too crazy. He moved up here, it's quiet, it's charming. I think when people say protect our village, a lot of people. Are not really thinking about me, you, we love all those guys, right? People think all you guys are great, everyone's great. But they're also just saying protect our village, the quiet, the charming. That's, I think that's what a lot of people mean. They're, they're not, they're not, that's what's in their heart. Not so much this protect our village, but I don't know.
No, you're, you're right. The charm is, is special. It really is. And, and, and I work in the city. I do construction in downtown city. And I can't wait to get home to the serenity, believe it or not.
Right.
So, and, and that's, no, I, I, I can't wait. I can't wait to get out of the city and get home to the serenity of my own home. In, in, in the area I live in. It's beautiful. But we, I, I can't, I can't tell that to somebody who's on a fixed income that you have to give it up. You know what I mean? Like your complaints about the building, I have to hear about taxes going up too. And we have to hear about this. And as a board, we all have to hear about, it's getting too expensive to live here.
Really, is this, and I'm way over my minutes. Yeah, yeah, but you know, like, like, like Anthony said, you're, you're very passionate. We're listening to you, you know, and, and we appreciate your comments and, you know, so.
A fixed income person isn't gonna be protected. It, it's two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars doesn't really make it to the bottom line.
But the next commercial development that follows to, to help them, you know, bring it into Delhi or whatever it is, that'll help.
So, so you're going for the fact that this will set off a chain reaction that in the end will help us keep our taxes.
Just like it has done in every other community. That's right.
Well, discretionary income. We had, we had an ex trustee actually polled the board a couple of months ago, what our. Uh, thoughts were on things like that. And myself, I said, this is the beginning of something along Albany Post Road. It was Albany Post Road. We took that the character of the village. There's nothing against anybody in this room, but we have a great character. Albany Post Road is not the character. We all know that. Look at it. My, my, was that?
That corridor.
That whole corridor has always been a complaint by everybody with the way things going. I'm hoping that sometime in the future, not only this development, if it goes through, or if it comes through with. What we all would like to see would somehow enhance the rest of that corridor with some of these other properties that are there. That can develop with maybe some uh businesses that will, the village residents will love to go to. That's right. Bring some people into the village. Things like that. That's what my vision is of it. I'm not saying it has to be five stories, but one underneath. I'm just saying something there that's going to, it's, it's the beginning of something. Yes. That's how I feel about it.
That's, okay. Things that look a little more townhouse, a little louder in my mind, they're better.
Well, you'll be happy to know that we just agreed on one in, on Lakeley Avenue.
I just heard. I missed you.
Yeah. And the initial one was thirty apartments. Yeah. And we turned it down for the townhouse.
That's nice. I think that that fits well. I wish we would have thought of that reportedly to, to help like that was a high story. But that's. All right.
Anyone else? Comments from the floor?
Yeah, I lean. Oh, wow. That's great.
All right, I'll hold it for a minute. I mean, something about video technology. Steve.
Yeah.
Have the theft scoring up over the last few months? Who's probably stayed around twenty, fifteen, twenty?
I believe it's less than that.
I think you said nineteen. That's just last week.
That's. No, I don't believe that's our other.
Here it is. What is it?
Yeah, yeah. No, we, I think it's the property checks, right, nineteen?
Property check. That's what I mean, that's.
Oh, that's, that.
No.
No, property check. Property checks, property checks.
Just a property check. Yeah, yeah. Somebody calls up to check.
Well, some, someone will go away and they're checking their home every so often. I don't know why they're away. I didn't do it. I have good neighbors.
Yeah.
I was shocked.
When did whole tech go on hold?
They're still in discussions. Um, they have not, they have not uh stopped their decommissioning process. Um, we're waiting to see what the next step is. Um, my understanding, there was some more decommissioning work they can do before they get into a situation where they just can't move forward with the, the water on the property and. But I think it was November, they spent fuel all beyond the pad by November.
That could not be renegotiation of the pilot? Or is that something that's planned?
We're gonna, we're gonna be discussing, we're gonna be discussing the pilot.
I didn't know if that would be part of it, but it's just sort of everything. Is there that when the pilot? Would be renegotiated or is it after a time period that they're, they're signing for?
There's still time left on the pilot, but, you know.
Just the secession fund is really, with, with what we must look at. That's the money.
Okay.
That's the state.
I just wanna say to Lisa. Please have people watch the board meetings or the planning board meeting if they do want them more. Okay, can't come to a meeting, hey, do you want, you got watching meetings? At least that way you can stay informed one way or the other if you can't make it here or go on Zoom or you're on. Uh, being clicked, um, at least go on to the uh board meetings. Um, so that you are there, that things are going. And could you agree also with Bob and the Draxer at Albany Post Quarter? It is, um. It is, um, it's not the residential area, it is representatives of the charm of Buchanan. Um, and at the Buchanan Day is everybody said it was a beautiful day and it was well attended, there were a lot of new families that you've never seen before. So it means that they can, they brought their families coming in there, they were more upset with what the school system did and it's basically a party to force away. School system was very impactful, uh, there were a lot of these families coming in. Um, and the last thing I wanted to know about was did the board require the deputy treasurer position or did the county require it? Where did that come from?
Uh, no, the, the um, the resolution of what's required by the county.
If we want the position, if we want the position.
Correct.
So the position is.
If you want the position, now does that take out the part-time girl?
Possibly.
Does that take out anybody else?
No, it's actually replacing her position, we had to reposition there many years ago, it's never been replaced.
And, and, and no decision has been made, it's just simply to create the position within the post, we wanna fill the position, that's all.
And, and just to comment, I, I think um, what really makes the village very special is the community spirit here. And you could see that at Buchanan Day, the amount of people that came out and to celebrate the village. Yes, ma'am, Lisa.
I'd like to say to Lisa, I agree with her about the meetings, I've been coming faithfully for over a year now. And I am still sometimes lost. So I remember I had to email to find out what an AMS project was not so long ago. So I think there should be a little bit more clarity on the agendas, I know that's more work and I don't need to get more work. But for example, on today's agenda, there was just grants. You all may know what it is, but it is, if you wanted to comment on it before now and wanna be a little bit more creative, we might wanna have a little bit more clarity, so I do think that's an improvement.
Point, point will take and I think we're all working on that as, as getting better at that, so.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation. Thank you all for coming.
Motion to adjourns?
A motion to go into.
Yeah.
Second.
On paper?
Bye.
Have a great Buchanan Day.